Hi, how are you?
I'm great.
How was good to see you. And you loaded today, right? You loaded today?
I will actually load it, I don't know, a week or more ago, but I get to wear it today.
Gotcha.
Otherwise, it's, you know, doesn't stick anymore.
Yeah, that's true. Good buddy to you.
Hey, good to see you.
How's the, what's called?
The what you call it dinner?
It's a street food house.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's there. It's, I'm glad it's like a nice gray color and purple or something.
Wait till you light it up.
Yeah.
It'll be fun to see the kids enjoying themselves. Yeah, I thought actually it was gonna be sort of.
Hello. I'm great, how are you?
How are you? We all have the gray suit. The gray suit day today.
Yeah, we're matching. I'm secretly not matching.
Voting days.
Hey, and at eight o'clock, we're gonna find out what happened.
It is so nice.
Does anybody have New Jersey results? New Jersey election results? All right. Cheryl Wynn is recording.
Good evening, everyone. I will call tonight's regular meeting, City Council for November 4th, 2025, to order. Let's stand together and proudly recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you kindly call roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Brando Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Lamatina.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph.
Here.
Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here. Report on closed session and confirmation report of action. Madam Attorney, will you, are you ready to present?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session to first discuss matters relating to public employment, public employee performance evaluation for the city manager. Secondly, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, several cases there. City of American Canyon versus City of Vallejo, Vallejo versus City of American Canyon. I'm not gonna read all of the case numbers, it's in the agenda. And then finally, oh, and a new matter, American Canyon One LLC versus City of American Canyon, that's new litigation. And then finally, we also, the council also discussed a matter of anticipated litigation. Direction was provided so far to, on some of the matters, to legal counsel and staff. No action has been taken. It, I believe that the mayor and council may wish to go back into closed session, adjourned closed session, after tonight's meeting and continue to discuss. But as of now, there is no direction taken, just, I'm sorry, no action taken, some direction provided to the city attorney and staff. And that is the end of my report, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Highsmith. Moving on to proclamations and presentations, tonight we have an update from our own Napa County Supervisor for District Five, Belio Ramos.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councils, this, this time change has got me a little sideways, I don't know about you, but in my middle age, it's hitting me a little bit harder and harder each year. It's a pleasure to be before you. It's been a few months and I always try and make sure I come and tell you what, what we're up to at the county. That relationship for you to understand what we do at the county, how it relates to the city and the services we're providing to our residents countywide is incredibly important, so I thank you for this opportunity. I did have some leave behinds that I think the madam clerk sent to you, and I'm gonna start with the first one, and that is our strategic initiatives. And we didn't do a strategic plan with the Board of Supervisors, but I, we had an amazing opportunity, two new colleagues, and it's a great opportunity to get together and see what that thought process is and how we're gonna prioritize what means most to, to us and what we're able to bring. And so we really came through with these four pillars of building healthy, connected communities, championing environmental sustainability and resilience, preserving Napa County's agricultural legacy, and elevating county service and workforce excellence. And I think that these are really important because it really speaks to, if you look at, from my perspective, you see what's at the bottom, and it's our workforce that is making all of these things lift up. We know that our agricultural heritage through the agricultural preserve is very much a part of who we are in Napa County, and we've gotta make sure that we sustain that going forward. But we also know that we have the, the pressures of climate change and wildfires and everything else that Mother Nature brings our way. Luckily, we haven't had locust yet, but we know that that is, that's all a very ever-present threat to our community, and we've gotta make sure that we are not only prepared, but we are also resilient when those disasters do occur. And so this is really looking forward as to how we're gonna do that. And I can't think of a better segue into, to the next one of the importance of building healthy and connected communities. We know that county services, that's a safety net. We provide for the most vulnerable residents of our county, we are constitutionally obligated to do so, because it's my personal opinion, if we weren't, I don't think anyone would actually do it. It is incredibly hard work, but it is work of the heart, and making sure that we have those healthy communities is important. And right now, I mean, I'm always a champion for counties, but right now, I've gotta say counties are by far the greatest champions that our, our residents have, and that is because the federal shutdown has created such an incredible impact, disproportionately affecting our most vulnerable residents within our community. And so just to put it into context, I'm sure you, everyone has heard about the CalFresh disruption, that is the SNAP benefits disruption from the federal government. In Napa County, we have 10,700 residents that are receiving SNAP benefits for a total distribution monthly of 1.9 million. Twenty percent of those are your neighbors here in American Canyon, and I, and I wanna stress that, you know, it's, I think, really important to understand what this program does. What this program does is it provides safety net, it provides safety net food, so that people aren't having to make those really difficult choices between medical care and rent. And so making sure that our families are fed is a top priority. We do have a policy at the county of no backfill for what, what failures may happen above us at the state and federal government. So in order to ensure that we are adhering to our, to our budget policies, we actually did declare an emergency. We allocated $1 million for emergency food aid. We have utilized a, a grocery gift card distribution program that was actually utilized through, by the city and county of San Francisco, and it's gonna allow us to give $50 gift cards to those, those households that hold EBT cards, and that is happening this week. And while you may have heard that there was a judge that said you have to use the reserves and it's all this technical stuff, the judge actually didn't say how much they had to fund, the federal government had to fund, they were only funding half of the monthly allocation. Eventually, when this government does open up again, people will receive their benefits, those are entitlements, they are entitled to receive that money. But in the meantime, I'd wanna assure you, the Napa County Board of Supervisors is making sure that we are not gonna let people go hungry. I do wanna provide a website, and that website is nappafoodaccess.org. And nappafoodaccess.org is where we have all of the fresh, fresh food distributions, where you can, where you can go into the food banks and to the food pantries if you are an EBT recipient, where you can receive the supplemental services that we are providing at this very moment. And I just, I wanna say from the bottom of my heart, an incredible thank you to the food bank who has stepped up, and to Winston's Cup. Winston's Cup is a subdivision, a nonprofit through Winston's Bakery in Napa, and they are providing a free meal to any family that shows up with their EBT card on November 12th. No questions asked, they could eat it there, they could take it to go, that's incredible. And to the Napa Valley Community Foundation, who has been our fiscal sponsor and being able to help us maneuver and distribute all of these cards. It is an incredible lift. Oh, and also the Napa Farmers Market. The Farmers Market is continuing their market match, even if someone's EBT card is at zero, they will automatically give them $50 to be spent at the fresh food Farmers Market. It takes truly a village, and so what I would say to everyone, I'll give as an example, a lot of you know, Friday nights for my kids, we have sushi, and my children gave up sushi until this whole issue is, is resolved. So we will be donating our weekly sushi outing to one of our nonprofits that is, that are helping us. So I just would ask for those that are able to, to please be generous, and for those that do need assistance, please make sure you go on to, to that website. One of the things we've been working on in the county is, and it's incredibly important, when you look at equity and what it means, you need to meet people where they're at. And so that is exactly what we have done. We have two rolling vehicles, we have the Napa County Probation Department, and we have the HHSA Be Well Mobile Services. And so what these are, these are outreach vehicles to make sure that we are able to provide resources for probation. You'll be able to go into this vehicle and actually participate in cognitive behavioral therapy, make sure you have your check-ins with your probation officer. There will be no enforcement actions, this is really a resource. And I'm so incredibly proud of our probation department for, for coming up with this idea and really getting out and, and deploying it. Our HHSA Be Well vehicle is already having rotating locations throughout the, the county. I know that they are excited to be finding one here in American Canyon. I may or may not have suggested that they call the city manager for that location, so you could look forward to that call coming, so we can make sure that the Be Well program is also here. And there you can receive sustainability services, like enrollment of CalFresh, health screenings, CalWorks, and other resources. Long ago, you may have heard, I'm sure Councilmember Mark Joseph is here, but we heard Supervisor Codwell, my predecessor, talk about the reentry facility. And the reentry facility was a great thing in concept, with the state of California helped us build a facility that was gonna be a duly-staffed probation and correctional facility. And then, the residents of California changed criminal justice laws, and what they did is that what would have been a population between 80 to 95 criminal justice clients that could be serviced at the reentry facility to be there at night, receiving cognitive behavioral therapy, and to be released to work during the day, that population shrunk to eight because of the readjustments of misdemeanors and felonies in the state of, in the state of California. What that translated to, in order to open that facility with the minimum staffing that would be required, it was going to cost us $806,000 per client in the building. Frankly, there was no way I was ever going to do that. So we sat on it, and we sat on it for a while, but we have found a, a new way. And what we have found is that this is going to make a great behavioral health treatment center, with an investment from the Community Corrections Partnership, and with the county of Napa, we're going to make sure that we are transitioning this into a mental health rehabilitation center, a sobering center, and to really be able to bring the next level of treatment into Napa County. I am incredibly excited for what this will be. It will be different in, in layout, the bones are gonna stay the, the same on the outside, but I look forward to sharing what that programming and how we're gonna move forward on that going. Now, the important part is, we own this building free and clear. Next, I, I think you all, all know, housing is something that is incredibly near and dear to my heart, and at all levels, whether it's addressing the unhoused, whether it's affordability, or whether it's just the supply of housing. The truth is, we have a lot of concerns here in terms of housing. One of the things that we looked at, we commissioned these four reports, and these four reports are available on our, on our website, and they're really, really great because what they, they, they talk about is, even if a family can afford the rent, they can't find a place to rent. And so the state of housing looks at the healthy mix of housing that a community needs to have. I don't need to go further than here to tell you, we don't have condominiums, that is entry-level housing. Entry-level housing is important so that you can have that cyclical change of housing. Those transfers that are happening is revenue into the county, revenue into the city, and without that movement of housing, we experience that problem here in American Canyon. People buy an incredibly large house, more than what they need, and then they just sit on it, and we actually don't have properties moving throughout. We also commissioned a farm worker needs study, and what we really found, it was just to solidify what we knew, we need more family farm worker housing. We have a lot more female farm workers, and so that single male farm worker center model is certainly not going to serve us into the future. Then we went into the needs assessment, and this is really like, what is it that we need to plan for? That was really helping us, all of this was helping us inform, what do we need to do in terms of housing impact fees? You may have heard, we raised the housing impact fees at the, at the county of Napa, they're phased in over a three-year period, but what we're really looking at is making sure that the burdens that are, that are increased by development in the county and the unincorporated county are being accounted for. And so all of these very detailed and informative reports were commissioned by Generation Housing out of Santa Rosa that will be having a greater presence here in Napa County. Next, the general plan. General plan is, you know, something that we most definitely, you know, it's, it's one of those, I would say, one, one, once-in-a-career type move, right? The last time this was updated was in 2008, I, I wasn't sitting at any one of these seats in 2008, and it's time to take a look. And so we are starting with our baseline data report. Our baseline data report is, you know, where we're seeing, where are we now, so that we can truly take that inventory and be able to move forward. And so we have a series of workshops that are coming up next week, and I definitely encourage you to share this. Let us know, it's important that we have a presence and input from American Canyon, from the South County. There are in-person workshops available, there are also virtual workshops available. Next, I, I'm happy to share, last year with the help of the Arts Foundation, we had a very successful first student art contest. And to me, I think one of the things in, in why I'm doing this is, there's nothing like this here in, in the 5th district in the southern portion of the county, where we are recognizing youth artists and the work that they bring forward. And so we are doing it again. This is part of our, of the District Five's Community Grants Program, and in partnership with the Arts Foundation. And what is exciting is that we will have an artist reception on December 10th. I've provided you, the council, with a flyer, I would ask if you know anyone, reaching out to teachers, anyone in the community that you think is, is, even if, if they don't think they're a good artist, that's what we wanna encourage, right? We wanna encourage those expressive features of our, of our young kids. So the reception for the artists will be at, on December 10th at 4:30, and of course, anyone is welcome to attend. And then you just stick around for our open house, and this is District Five's open house. One of the things we're doing countywide, each of the supervisors is hosting an open house, and I, I am excited, we'll have the high school choir will be getting us started. If you weren't able to purchase a ticket to their holiday concert, you can come hear their warm-up here at City Hall, just downstairs. And we're really excited to be now celebrating one year of being here, and I am so incredibly grateful to the city for that partnership. I can tell you, I was just sharing with Fran and Beth, that I, I, I'm so grateful to have this office and those relationships and city staff walking in, and my inbox has gone down, Jason, you don't email me as much, cuz you just walk in the door, and I very much appreciate that. And I think that, I'm, I'm kinda shocked that we did it any other way for the first eight years that I had the opportunity to be your supervisor, so I just wanna thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions. We are generally here at City Hall on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Melissa's always here, my MTC schedule, as I am serving as a commissioner right now in the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, has me out two of those Wednesdays, but I come in, in the afternoon, and sometimes on Wednesday afternoons, you'll even see my son and his bike in, in the office, come in to, to grab a Coke Zero. But stop by anytime, and, and please let us know, one, if you have any questions, or two, if there's any way that, that we can assist. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ramos, and for keeping us well informed. And I also wanna acknowledge that I, I heard that you were also collecting food downstairs for people, so thank you for what you're doing for, for those who need the assistance. We do have a few questions, starting with Councilmember Lamatina.
Thank you for that presentation. A quick question about the Be Well, is that able to make it to Barriessa, or no?
It, it is able to make it to Barriessa, and so what, how we are structuring is making sure that we are staffing it and understanding it right now, in those areas that we know we have a greater population. It will require greater coordination, but I know that there are discussions to even take it out to like the Pope Valley, the Farm Center and, and other places. We do have fire stations that we can locate it out at, but really, we're trying to assess the greatest impact. So if we only have about 10 clients out there, might be better to, to travel out there separately instead of just the, the Be Well.
Great, thank you. Of course.
Any other questions? Seeing none, again, thank you for what you do for, you can re-say something?
No, I was.
Okay, thank you for what you do for American Canyon, we appreciate you representing us so well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We have one presentation, actually one proclamation, which is item number five for Veterans Day. Do we have a recipient for Veterans Day? Beth? 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 Thank you, Beth Marcus.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna read the proclamation and then allow you an opportunity to kinda give.
Excuse me, Mayor, is your microphone turned on, or maybe you need to speak a little bit closer to it? There we go.
Speak up. Can you hear me now? Testing, testing?
You have to be right in front of it.
Okay. It's all close now. Thank you for coming up, Beth. I'm gonna read the proclamation for Veterans Day 2025. The City of American Canyon proclamation, Veterans Day 2025, whereas November 11th is anniversary, is the anniversary for, and I'm gonna mispronounce this, but Armutish, signed by the Allies and the German in 1918, which ended World War I after four years of conflict. President Woodrow Wilson issued the first, the first Armutish? I know I'm tearing it up, but the Armutish Day proclamation in November of 1919, and set the tone for further observations. And whereas the name changed from Armutish, which is lucky for me, to Veterans Day by the Act of Congress in 1954, when President Eisenhower called on citizens to observe the day in honor of all who had served in America, America's war through the years. And whereas, the City of American Canyon recognizes the significance of lasting contributions made by our veterans who have dedicated their lives to the service of our great nation. And whereas, the history of the United States is rich with the deeds of those American Canyon residents who have served in our armed forces in honor and distinction. And whereas, today we recognize these courageous men and women who represent the best of our nation and our community have to offer. And with their service, these veterans have proven that Americans' freedoms are worth protecting. And whereas, the community is deeply grateful for the sacrifices made by each and every veteran and their families. And we will continue to work tirelessly to ensure that they receive the care, support, and respect they deserve. And whereas, we invite American Canyon community to join us in honoring the brave men and women who have served our country at Veterans Day Ceremony on November 11th, 2025. The ceremony will take place at 11:00 AM in the American Canyon Middle School Gymnasium. Together, we proudly recognize and pay tribute to the veterans of the past, the present, and the future. Now therefore, I, Pierre Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2025, as Veteran Day in American Canyon.
I guess it's my turn.
Yes, Beth.
I don't know where my fellow members are, but anyhow, I stand here not only on behalf of myself, but I had a uncle and a brother and a granddaughter that was all in the service, and I'm proud of our, our continued presence. And all I can say is that when I went into the service, I went, went in hoping I could fight, but I wasn't allowed to at that time, they, you know, the only way you could go to war is if you were a nurse, and I wasn't a nurse, but I tell you what, if they had me today, I would go back and do whatever I had to do, but it was, I look back at it now, and I think it was sort of the best time of my life, because it really is rewarding to do something for your country and not just for, for you. And I try to carry that through by continuing to do things with our community here, by volunteering to do whatever I can. That's where you learn, and hopefully you instill it in your, your children, your grandchildren, and my great-grandchildren, so thank you for this.
And you always set a great example for the community, me, so thank you for what you do, thank you for your service.
Thank you, and Brando and everybody else here who is also veterans.
Okay, we're gonna come up and take a picture with you? Up here. Up here. And as everyone knows, I'm really glad that they changed the name to Veterans Day. Moving on to public comments. At this time, I'd like to open up public comment for any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Do, Madam Clerk, do we have any?
I do, I had two speaker cards. I'm going to call Nancy Nabrinsky.
Hello, Nancy.
Hello. Over the last three years, there has been a group playing pickleball. And today, there were 16 of us out there. Over the week, there is usually 50 to 75 people playing either basketball, tennis, pickleball, and then there's a children's playground. We're requesting, based on the fundamental need that we have, at least one porta potty, but two would be nice out there. And also, the drinking fountain has been broken. But there's plenty of people out there. It's the, you know where the pickleball courts are too. And then we have another request. Thank you.
You'd like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi, I'm Susan Watkins. And thank you for allowing me to do a brief talk. And so I'm grateful to be retired here in American Canyon. And we have a lot of great people that I've met recently as I take up pickleball in addition to tennis. And it's getting a bit tough, actually, with only one tennis court and two pickleball courts to actually time. You know, we actually talk to, the different groups all talk to each other and say, well, what time do you guys going to be there? What time are you going there? But it's kind of tough to try to use, to get access to the courts when there are so few. And so I know that over on Melvin Road, the two tennis courts there have really not been usable for a long, long time. They have a lot of cracks in those courts. And if you even try to, the tennis balls are all gritty if you get done playing there. And so I didn't know if there was a plan. We've been told that it was on the list for those courts to be redone. And so just wanting to inquire whether there's a plan for redoing the courts on Melvin Road and whether that's just going to be for tennis or whether we might do a similar thing as on Elliott Drive where there's a combination of tennis and pickleball for all the enthusiasts out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And thank you, Nancy.
I have no other speaker cards. I have no hands raised online.
No one online? No hands raised? No one inside the room with their hands up either? I'll close public comment and return to council for any agenda changes on the agenda. We have four items. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a second. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is public hearing. We do not have any public hearing items for this evening. So we'll move on to business items. Where there is one business item, number 10, Energy Independence and Affordable Act Letter of Support. And I would ask, Mr. Holly, do we have a speaker for that?
We have someone online. I'm going to move her over and just.
Representative from Congressman Thompson's office will be joining us up on the big screen.
Okay.
Here in a moment. There's Anna.
Anna Chateau.
Anna, can you hear us? You're muted. There we go.
Hi.
Hello, Anna.
Speak a little closer into your microphone if you could, Anna. And we're ready when you are. Yes.
Yeah, we hear you a little bit better, Anna.
Just a little bit. Is there something wrong with the audio? I tested it.
It's okay.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I am Anna Chateau. I am a representative for Congressman Mike Thompson. And I'm here tonight to respectably ask for the mayor and the council's support for his American Energy Independence and Affordability Act. This is his commitment for lowering costs, creating jobs, and a clean environment. This important legislation restores critical clean energy tax incentives that help families and small businesses and local governments reduce costs, which I know you will like. It creates jobs and also secures Americans' energy futures. So communities like American Canyon are on the front lines of the rising energy cost and the transition to cleaner, more resilient economy. So this, we're calling it the Green Energy Bill, is really going to how we're going to have clean energy tax credits for solar, wind, and advanced manufacturing, as well as for energy-efficient homes, commercial buildings, clean vehicles. All of that's going to have a direct impact in our community. So it's really going to make it easier for homeowners to improve energy efficiency, allow small businesses to lower overhead costs, and enable our local governments to modernize public infrastructure while saving taxpayer dollars. So I really hope that you can support it tonight. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Anna. Are there any clarifying questions or concerns from the council? Vice Mayor.
Nothing to clarify, but I'm happy you're bringing this forward. I'm happy the congressman is trying to push this issue again. I know he was instrumental in building it as part of the Inflation Reduction Act. So my attitude is, I liked it the first time. I'd like it again. So I'm certainly supportive of doing something to endorse that from our perspective.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. If there's no other questions, I'll open it up for a public comment for any question on item number 10 for Anna. Anyone in the room have any questions? Seeing none in the room. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody online?
Nothing online.
Thank you. Well, Anna, it seemed like it was going to be a short evening for you. We appreciate the information. And we know that you're working hard for our congressman, Mike Thompson. So thank you for what you do as well.
With that, I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Federal Energy Independence and Affordability Act.
We have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. And thank you again, Anna, and have a good night.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you all for your service. It's such a joy to hear you do your business and see what good hands American Canyon is in. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
There's no other business item, but we now have the manager and staff, and Oro reports. Mr. Holly?
We don't have any other updates, mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
Just a quick reminder, Veterans Day Ceremony is next Tuesday at 11:00.
Okay, okay, thank you. So then we'll just move on to our mayor and council comments and committee reports. Starting with you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Well, I don't have anything to report other than to reinforce what Supervisor Ramos mentioned earlier. The, her office and the Art Foundation is sponsoring that fall student art contest. So if you're young, or even if you aren't, if you're a middle schooler or a high schooler in the 5th District, get that photography, that painting, whatever. Get it in, turned in. The deadline is November 14th. Next, not this Friday, but the Friday after. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Oro?
I have nothing to add.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just a reminder again, on 11/11, at 11:00, we have the Veterans Event at ACMs. And for those also that would like to attend another Veterans Event, there's one in Bonita at the Veterans Memorial Hall. That's going to be on Sunday, 11/9, and it will start at 8 o'clock. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, and if I understand correctly, that for veterans is a free breakfast?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is a free breakfast. I understand Assemblywoman Lori Wilson will be there in attendance as well.
Okay. I don't have anything else to report, but I do want to acknowledge that my neighbor Cynthia is here today and just want to say thank you for coming out. Thank you. And I believe a reporter from The Current was here earlier, Ms. Griffin. And it was nice seeing her as well. Other than that, we've had a light calendar. You were about to say something.
I wanted to just follow up on the public comment. If we could get a report back on the porta potties at Elliott Park and some idea of the Melvin Park renovation schedule? Either now, if you've got it, or at a future council meeting?
I don't have it now. Staff's going to be in touch with the residents and give them some information. Then I'll have a report for council as a whole later on this week, probably.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. And any other future agenda items? Hearing none? Quick evening. So we've concluded our business for this evening. We are adjourned. Good night, American Canyon, but we are going to go back into closed session.